The time is now six o'clock PM. Is everybody excited to be here? Yeah, okay, good. Awesome. Then we can go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the row?
Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Urban. Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milawonway.
Here. And next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have three people to speak in person and one to speak remotely. First, if we could, after your statement, if we could start with Liz Pierce. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen to and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased.
Thank you. First up, Liz Pierce. And then to follow will be John Morrissey.
Yeah, I got three things. First one. I received this over a year ago last May. And I objected to it then, and I still can't get it to come to where I can get it dismissed. They got me for less than thirty foot from a stop sign, and I was parked two and a half feet legally. That's that one. My next one is I'm starting to have trouble with my foundation because Center Street has been made a highway. And especially, for some reason, farmers that have them eighteen wheeler grain trucks like to come down Center Street instead of going around the interstate. And here in the last month or so, I've had a lot of them go across that manhole cover, and it vibrates the ground, and that's what's starting to do my foundation. It's nothing that I created, the state of Illinois and the city of Bloomington that let the state make Center Street a highway that was originally a residential street and a dead end at the end of the sixteen hundred block. And then, well, since I got that part out, property taxes I got, they jacked me up quite a bit. And I'm on social security probably towards the lower end, and they think everybody evidently works for State Farm and makes all kinds of money. Well, everybody doesn't. And that five hundred dollar appreciation thing they give us isn't enough anymore. It needs to be jacked up where it helps us in the lower income. That should do it, I guess. And I would appreciate somebody could come out there tomorrow, and I can show them my foundation, what it's doing to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Liz Pierce. Liz, and then to follow will be Deborah Johnson.
My name's Liz Pierce, and I was kind of glad he went first because I come from farms. And I've been seeing the grain trucks, but I can't seem to make, know how to make a police report in regard to what happened to my farms, eight of them. If they put a sign, I bet the guys would oblige, but, or the workers who run them. But I'm in one of six areas where I hope, if I could say anything, when I came back from overseas, there was a combine in a dirt strand steel building. Now, I'm in a creek, and it's like a heyday, these twenty-two to twenty-eight-year-olds, they've been doing it for eight years, twenty-four hours. I'm a little flummoxed after coming out of breast cancer where they wonderfully increased that building, and somebody died because they gave up when they had cancer because their tongues swollen. If that person could have gotten routed, maybe didn't have much money, these doctors and nurses are great. They help you. It's just a lot of people, because I was a veteran, I kind of got funneled there. I gave one of those tests, and they spotted me evidently. So there's, I've been looking at bi-levels, how to fix them, because two brothers in Wisconsin said, you have a type of Frank Lloyd Wright to prairie, the way the houses were built, but they're made cheaply. When they hit into the ground and pound the ground with these monster subwoofers, or they all gather, and yeah, there was meth pending indictment on the other one because one of the nurses found it. I didn't know how. So I'm between not knowing how to report electronic gadgets that hit my heart out of a deep sleep. They usually run me out of my bedroom and my bed at one thirty, but now it's getting more brazen at ten thirty PM. One thirty, until ten or eleven AM, they do two big shocks into my house. Yeah, one of the guy's mom worked at a phone company, and by being running through the garage, because I've never been able to find somebody to fix my Nycor line. So I run to the garage out of my house. Because this stuff pops the whole house. It shakes the house. Then they put on these nifty little JBL screamings after various type boomings to vibrations. It's specific, but I don't know how to go to the police because how do you, if all they do is turn the knob when the policeman gets there versus how do you, I mean, it, I don't have any sleep. You take sleep away from people, but it's, they run, the sun maybe once my yard. They put a, drop a biggle in, now my fifteen, fourteen thousand dollar fence is marginalized. I just want to go with, please give me advice and help me understand how to do the right thing with law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Next up, we have Deborah Johnson, and then to follow will be William Gustafson, who is participating remotely.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deborah Johnson, Ward four. I'm standing before you because I just wanted to give accolades to the city of Bloomington's 101 program. I had the distinct privilege and pleasure of attending a series of classes under the leadership of the Bloomington 101 program. And I think this is the first class in a couple of years because of the COVID. And I must admit, I had very little knowledge of the program and what it entailed. And I was a bit skeptical of its value to our taxpayer dollars, but, you know, we didn't pay anything for it, but I'm just proud to have been a part of it. And I'm so proud to stand before the city of Bloomington and the council to express my gratitude. This is a worthwhile program. It was very beneficial to me as a resident of Bloomington for the last forty-five years. And intending, and attending this program, I met the most wonderful people who constantly keep this town running behind the scenes. And I am, I was in awe as to the many details that have to go into running this city. I also wanted to say that I had many questions. I think I got on a lot of people's nerves because I asked a lot of questions. But I do want to say that a lot of hands-on activities that they provided, each department provided so much hands-on, so activities, so much knowledge to their department that all of my questions, the majority of my questions were answered without hesitation. Last, but I wanted to say kudos to the city of Bloomington for offering this program to residents. And I wanted to say I hope this program continues. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last up, we have William Gustafson, and he is on remotely. William, if you can hear us, if you can go ahead and push star six, you could begin speaking. William, if you can hear us, if you go ahead and push star six, you should be able to begin speaking. Hi, William, can you hear us? It looks like you're still muted. If you push star six again. We can. Yeah, we got you. Go right ahead. You have three minutes. William, if you can speak up, we did hear you, and it looks like you're unmuted now.
It's okay like this?
We got you. You have three minutes.
Okay, yeah, I've got some larynxitis. Anyway, if everybody could go to Fox Weather app, they have an interesting article about leaving the leaves because of the nutrient value and the contribution that it will save from filling landfills. Anyway, I wanted to propose to the Bloomington educators and the city council to re-educate all of the residents here and possibly save five hundred thousand dollars plus from the city having to pick up the leaves, which are a benefit to the trees in the long run. The children learn about the carbon cycle, nitrogen cycle in school, and then they're come, they come home, and they're told to break the leaves out to the street in the curb, and the city comes with a vacuum cleaner and hauls them away. This is a subtraction process, not an addition process. So anyway, if people could review that article, she talks about the benefits. Everybody has a lawn mower, so you can pretty much mulch up your leaves and and use them for mulch for the trees that the carbon and the nitrogen mix with the soil and the grass. And so it doesn't kill, doesn't kill your lawn, but it benefits the trees in the long run. So, so again, the proposal is for the city to use that money, say five hundred thousand dollars, if you multiply that by five years, ten years, that's a lot of money that goes up in smoke. We used to burn the leaves, not really realizing the benefits of them. So, so the city could take that money and use it to buy new native indigenous trees to be planted in the parkways, so everybody has a a tree in their front yard. And if the yards are filled, then they can use that money to buy trees and plants for the parks and so on. So again, this could be a savings for the city. Bloomington Normal, all municipalities, instead of vacuum cleaning the streets. I think vacuum cleaners are fine, but people should use them indoors rather than the city being in charge of trying to help people maintain, maintain the leaf population going into the streets. I know they've got to keep the sewers clean, but, but then people should be encouraged to break them out of the street, you know, scouts, et cetera. If people are elderly, they can come around and show them where, where to put the leaves, mulch the leaves, so they're going to better fit the trees again in the long run. What else? So this could be a fundraising project for schoolchildren, et cetera. You could have block savings parties. Who could save the city the most money by not having to have the vacuum cleaner come out? And the people are pretty much cleaning up themselves, and again, benefiting trees in the long run. We don't know the long-term ramifications of depleting the trees of their nutrients, which Mother Nature has given them for their longevity. The oldest trees on earth are the ones being maintained by Mother Nature, sequoias, redwoods. I know they're unprotected areas. But then this used to be called Blooming Grove, so Blooming Grove is trying to flourish beneath our feet and around us. So the ash trees, something happens, something happened to the American elm, so so we really don't have a good record as far as citizens taking care of trees in the park.
Thank you. Thank you, William. I hate to interrupt you, but your three minutes are, are up. But thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a wonderful life.
Okay, you too. Why do I have to be the one to do that?
It's like you're in charge or something.
Yeah, okay.
There's no further public comment.
I'm going to designate somebody else to do that from now on, since I'm in charge. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is recognition appointments, and we are going to have a presentation of the winners of the 2022 City of Bloomington Beautification Awards as requested by the Citizens Beautification Committee. And I believe we have a presentation by, I was going to say council member, but not anymore, Johnny Painter, who is the Chair of the Citizen Beautification Committee. Welcome back.
Hello, thank you. Well, every
Did you miss this?
Yeah.
That's the polite answer.
Every year, the Citizens Beautification Committee sends out a call for nominations for the city beautification awards for the city of Bloomington. It can be businesses or homes. And we look for beauty and curb appeal and effort that went into it, and if they enhance the neighborhood. And when the results come in from the nominations, all the committee members go and check out every property. And then we rate them from one to ten. And we have a meeting, and we collate and tabulate the results and figure out who the winners are. And I'd like to introduce you to the members on our committee that are here tonight. If you're a member of this committee, would you please stand? Becky Alta, Chris Kraft, Daniel Freeberg, Debbie Johnson, and our fearless leader, Bobby May. And we have five wonderful winners tonight, and I will turn it over to our Vice Chair, Ron Fraser, to do the presentation. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ron Fraser, the Vice Chair, and I have props. Very neat props. I'm not sure how this is going to work, but first of all, I want to just explain a little bit. You can see on the screens, these are our winners. We have commercial, we have three homes, private homes. All right, thank you. I'll start with the two commercial ones. First one on the far left is Catalyst Construction Company. They did soil building. Do you want to come up? We thought that what they've done, not just the building itself, but they've really upgraded the curb appeal. It just adds so much to that section of the street. And we just want to thank you very much for what you've done. Thank you very much. And the other one that you can see on the screen, below that on the bottom left, is Coffee Shop. And I just admire everything the Coffee Shop does. It had a very nice patriotic one this summer that really caught our attention. Adds a lot to the street there. Colorful. Coffee Shop. Very much for your efforts. Now we shall do private homes. Private mansion towns. Nine oh two Coventry. And theirs is in Buffalo Line. Blackpool Plantings. So being brought, and it added so much to the neighborhood, we thought. It was just a really nice addition to the neighborhood. Thank you for your efforts.
Appreciate you.
And then we have Fred and Ann Lampy. Bottom, four sixteen North Linden Street. Pants that put in five street beds in their entire front yard. It's a historical neighborhood. Adds interest. And there's a lot of talk about, you know, doing less turd with guards. Fades, so. Diner. Great property. And finally, Wendy and Sage. This was, I think, our favorite of all of them. It's just cottage house, lovely cottage garden, and it's just exuberantly flowers all year long. It's on Wood Street as you head towards Miller Park. It really stands out. Thank you for your efforts. It's acknowledged, and we'll make sure they get this. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, well, before everybody goes, I just want to say just a word of thank you for everything that you, you have done to beautify your, your property. The, the city of Bloomington, our community is, is known for being one that is very attractive to a lot of people. A number of people, visitors who drive through the area often comment of, on how neat, clean, and appealing the community is, and I think that is a testament to the efforts, not only on private residents, but also, I think, of our staff that does, you know, great work in beautifying a lot of the, the parkways. So we definitely, you know, the public spaces, I should say. So we definitely appreciate all of your work, and it's, it's inspiring. It is inspiring me right now. I was like, I need to work on my yard. So thank you all very much, and thank you to the Beautification Committee. I know it's not, it's not easy work, particularly when you have to go out there and, and check out different properties and decide which ones are more deserving of, of others when you present them, but we definitely want to thank you for your, your service and to the community. Thank you all. And you're more than welcome to stay because you beautify this area too. Okay. We are going to move to the consent agenda. And I believe we do have some items that need to be pulled, so.
Can you pull seven F and seven G, please?
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you pull seven C, please?
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item seven F, G, and C?
I move.
Okay, move by Councilmember Ward, and then second by Councilmember Bowlin. Okay, and the link is ready? Okay, the consent agenda passes with no nays to announce. Thank you. And so now we're going to consider items seven F, G, and C in the orders that they were pulled, so let's start with Councilmember Becker.
I just need to recuse on seven F and seven G because we do work with Donahue, and so I just don't want to be part of that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. If you want to step aside for a brief second. We can do this together, right? Seven F and seven G? Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve seven G and seven F.
Okay, and is there a second?
I can second.
Okay, all right, so. Motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Ward. Are we doing a link or voice? Link, okay. Okay, item seven F and seven G pass, and that's all witness to the return of the Jedi. And now we will go ahead and move on to item seven C.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I plan to support this, and I certainly understand the need, you know, for an ADA compliant elevator. I'm just wondering, maybe the city manager could comment. It's my understanding that a number of city services have moved out of this building into the government center. And I just wonder about the long-term plans for the building. Are there, are we expecting other needed renovations in the future? And, and just sort of thinking about, you know, how, how that building is aging, you would please?
That property, one oh nine East Olive, the city hall, that is still fully occupied by city staff. During the past couple of years, we have taken, many of the staff that are at city hall felt that they were better housed in this location, our partnership with McLean County under the Public Building Commission. And then we've taken the city staff, public works, parks, and we've put them in the one oh nine East Olive. and we've put them in the 109 East Olive. Sort of the thought process there was the Public Works campus, if you will. Public Works Director Kevin Cothe, his team, you have Russ Waller, Facilities Manager, and back closer to the rest of the Public Works staff.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. I appreciate it. That I would move that we approve item seventy on the consent agenda.
C, right?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Motney. And the link is ready. Okay, any item passes, no nays to announce, and we're going to go ahead and move on to the regular agenda and presentation of the FY 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, delivered by the audit firm of Baker Tilly, Virchow Kraus, as requested by the Finance Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. This is something that the municipality does every single year, so it's about that time of the year again. Finance Director Scott Rathbun is going to have a couple of comments before we turn this over to the Baker Tilly representative, Mike Malat. But do me a favor, Scott, and you probably were going to do this anyway, just share the kind of staff time, who runs, you know, point on this. I know you do, but who runs point on this from your team?
Yes, sir. That was part of the plan. Thank you, City Manager Gleason and Mayor Council. FY 2022 audit was finalized October 28th. I don't know if you could hear it from here, but there was a big sigh of relief in the Finance Department. Literally a six-month process, a coordination with our advisors, Baker Tilly, but there's, there's also a lot of other entities involved in the coordination of completing this audit. You have the Public Safety Pension Funds, the Police-Fire Pension Funds. Fire uses Baker Tilly for their auditor, but the police have their own auditor. You have the Miller Zoological Society, the Bloomington Public Library Foundation. Many of these other entities have their own audits that have to be coordinated by the Finance Department, so Patty Lynn Silva, Assistant Finance Director, previously Chief Accountant, previously Finance Director, coordinates the audit with finance staff. It's, it's, it's an all-hands-on-deck. Like I said, it's full six months. There's many other departments that get involved in this, especially Human Resources. There's a lot of study on the, on the police and fire pension funds with the data for spouses and retirees, et cetera. So it's quite a heavy lift, and there's a lot of statutory, I won't call it statutory, but state accounting standards that we have to adhere to. And luckily, we have, you know, a strong relationship with our auditors and Baker Tilly guiding us through the process. This is our seventh year utilizing this firm, so we work closely together. We utilize them for a lot of other advisory functions. The audit's a 170-page document. There's a lot of other supporting reports that Michael's going to comment on as well. It's not something that typically your normal community resident would, would refer to. There's a lot of statements in there that are part of standards about rating agencies, investors that utilize this document heavily. There is a section in the back of the audit, statistical section. It's very interesting. I think the community would find that part of interest. It talks about the police and fire runs they made during the year, the parks, and all kinds of activity that I try to highlight during our budget process. So I could go on about this, but again, a lot of support within the Finance Department, a lot of exhibits that have to be completed. But at this time, I'll turn it over to Michael Malat. He's a partner with Baker Tilly. A couple of comments about Baker Tilly, international firm. They have a unit that specializes in state and local government. They have over a thousand clients, so they're experts, experts in their field, and we're fortunate to have a relationship with them. So having said that, Michael, turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, everybody, for your time this evening. Before I start on the brief presentation, I do want to thank Scott and Paylin and all the finance team and everybody who, Human Resources and all the other departments, we pester throughout the course of the audit process. As Scott mentioned, we demand and ask a lot to do what we're required to do, and people have to kind of deal with us in the midst of doing all the rest of their work during the course of the day. So I always think we're like a bit of a hurricane. We come in, we make a big giant mess, and we leave and kind of wrap up, and they have to kind of take care of us and everything else throughout the entire time. So without a really great team, it makes the audit process very difficult for everybody involved, and they are always responsive, always give us everything we need to conduct our audit, and really should be, take great pride in having a great team, a foundation underneath you guys in the Finance Department and the other departments as well. So with that, I will go to the presentation. Your next slide, please. So I'm not getting any too many numbers, a couple of highlights later on, but really what I want to cover is the scope of what we do in the audit. So here on this slide is the list of all the different reports that we issue. The primary one, the big document, is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That is the city's financial statements. That's you presenting your financial health as of April 30th, 2022. It's your information. We helped prepare that report because there's a lot of stuff that goes into it, but really, it's you communicating to the users of the financial statements, bondholders, the city residents and whatnot, as to where your financial health is. The only thing in that report that we issue is the little opinion that I'll get into briefly in a minute. Another report we issue is the Report on Federal Awards, which is what's called the Single Audit. Long story short, that's where we look at your federal expenditures and beat the daylights out of it. We make sure you're in compliance, not only with what you're spending it on, but all the different compliance requirements the various federal agencies require. Additionally, we test your compliance with spending. Make sure you're in compliance with state statutes regarding that. There's also a separate audit for your Foreign Fire Insurance Board that we issue. That's, that information is baked into the big report, but they also have their own little standalone report as well that gets issued. And there are also some statutory filings related to the Comptroller's Office, their annual financial report, as well as the Consolidated Year-end Financial Report, which is required by the Governmental Accountability and Transparency Unit, which is relatively new in the last four or five years. It's been required by the state. Next slide, please. So with all those reports, what do we actually do with them? In the big report, really, there's three, four pages that come from us in our words, and that's the unmodified or the independent audit report, which, which we probably, what's called an unmodified opinion. That in our lingo is the highest level of comfort we can give you, that that information is materially accurate, which means you can use that to give a good understanding of the picture of the city's financial health for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2022. We don't look at every penny to the dollar, but we look at things so that you can make sound judgments and can understand where the city is at at a given point reasonably stated. We also provide a similar opinion, that's separate Foreign Fire Insurance Board report. Additionally, in the state, the federal audit report, there is a schedule called the Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards, which is basically what you spent your federal money on during the year. We give a different kind of opinion that we're basically saying this agrees back to the big financial statements in our opinion on that. Same with that cipher, which is the Consolidated Year-end Financial Report. So basically says, we don't do as much work on those reports individually, but we make sure that they agree back within all reasonable, didn't talk, kind of talk with the other reports that we issue opinions on. The only report we don't actually give any kind of assurance on is that Illinois Comptroller's Report. We compile it for you guys based off of the financial statements. There's just nothing, no opinion required associated that by the statute. So we prepare it, submit it along with financial statements, and that's kind of where that one goes. Next slide, please. So a couple of quick numbers, and then I'll move on from those. As I know, this is six months old at this point, but really, coming to your financial highlights at the end of the year is that your governmental funds did have a $17.9 million operating surplus for the year. Much of that was in your general fund. A significant amount of that comes with increases in your CP, PRT, the Personal Property Replacement Taxes, income taxes, sales taxes. We've seen this across the board with the state, both with economic recovery, the timing of when income taxes were paid. There's a bit of a delay, so it kind of shifted some of that revenue back into '22, and it would have been in '21. Also, with some of the state's legislation related to capturing sales taxes on online sales, really saw a major increase, I think, more than anybody anticipated. So you're seeing a boon in that. How long that goes on, we don't know, but it was a big driver for some increases in the last year. That brought your, your general fund ending on a sign bounces, which is basically the money you can dictate to spend that is already committed for another purpose, to about 36.6 million as of April 30th. And your governmental funds in total across everything, about the purpose of that funding is, was about 93.4 million. Your enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, utilities, the arena, had a surplus of 4.3 million during the year, with really only the arena not experienced a significant increase in your kind of bottom line. And then one thing I always like to point out is the funded status of your pensions. Now, some of this is a little time delayed. The IMRF, which is your municipal pension fund at state level, is super overfunded. That is going to decline with the next report. That report, in the number that is being reported in this financial was at a 123121. Obviously, the markets have taken a bit of a hit since then. It is going to be realized. However, the funded status, given where it is as a 123121, should still be strong, but expect to see that number to decline as a 123122, and then next year's fiscal year 23 financial statements. The police and fire kind of did get, get a hit from the market declines. As you saw, there's a bit of a dip in their funded downs, but compared to most municipalities, that funded status is really good on your public safety plans. So that means you can weather the storm, even if it continues for a while, in a way that a lot of other plans are going to struggle with. So it's a good percentage compared comparably to other municipalities of your size in Illinois. Next slide, please. All right, really quick. So, long story short, on the other reports, our tax increment financing compliance report, where we talk about, we evaluate your expenditures, make sure you're doing it in compliance with state statutes. The only tiff we look at this year is the Empire Street tiff, as your other tiffs haven't reached that threshold of where we actually need to do work around it. It will in the next year or two, likely, where that incremental revenue starts to generate. Long story short, we've tested pretty much all your expenditures, and there were no issues or of noncompliance noted, so a clean opinion in terms of compliance with that. Then for the, the federal compliance report, there's two opinions in there. One relates to how we look at not just your numbers from the regular audit, but also your controls and processes. We do a deep dive on some of your significant transactions like payroll, accounts payable, some of your utility billing, to make sure there's no risks, right? That there's no kind of gaps in your processes and controls, and we're proud of what there's no significant material weaknesses or major basically gaps in your processes there. So again, it's good to know not only are the numbers accurate, but the process underlying those numbers, we feel, are strong, and do the best we can to mitigate any risks that could exist to the city. We also didn't identify any kind of noncompliance, not captured anywhere else that we're not opining on elsewhere. Next slide, please. And then here is the federal report. We tested one program this year, which is a CDBG program. It's your big kind of annual one that's always large. We've had some other grants coming over the years we've looked at, but this is the kind of bread and butter of your federal spending. We are able to provide an unmodified, clean opinion on that. There was one finding associated with the program that management addressed immediately upon identification. It's kind of a somewhat of an arcane requirement that kind of brought new life to it as ARPA and CARESAC funding came on. The federal government wanted people to start doing some additional reporting to them, so it had nothing to do with how you spent the money. There was no risk of anything associated with the city. It simply was a, an old rule that nobody really oversaw or cared about, and all of a sudden, they made it a thing again in 2020, which, you know, it kind of popped out of nowhere. So we identified it, and management very quickly remediated, so there would be no issue going forward, and there's no direct impact on your financial audit or anything else. Next slide, please. Lastly, you know, all the different ports, we also issue what's called the Results and Insights Letter, which is basically us communicating to you as the governing body, as the council. We work with finance and all the other departments in the course of it, but we really work for you. You're the ones who engage us to do all of this work. And what we're required to kind of communicate, a number of different things there. And the kind of the long story of this, short story of this, is that it's boring. Boring is good. Boring means there was no major issues. You don't want this letter to be exciting at all. So we have no real, no significant difficulties during the audit with management, no disagreements, no instances of noncompliance. Really, overall, a very smooth, clean audit process. So as I said, when you read that letter, we put some pictures in it, make it a little more exciting, but the actual text is very much required within our audit standards, and you don't want to see anything crazy in there because that's not good. So it was a very boring letter this year. There's a bunch of other information in there. Specifically, to use the council, there is a link in the electronic version that takes you to our website that has a whole bunch of different resources that get updated on a regular basis. Some of them may be pertinent, some of them maybe not, but they have a lot of things, kind of a whole smorgasbord of different things that would be of potential interest to you as a governing body. Next slide, please. So with that, hopefully, I spoke quick enough, and any questions you may have?
Council questions? Looks like this was a clean presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move on to City Manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I believe, three slides tonight, and I always typically read these because I think our viewers can't see them online, but you can see these on the city's website. Small Business Saturday, truly kicking off the holiday shopping season. Come out and shop small and support our community on November 26th. Next slide, Matthias. Thanksgiving Farmer's Market. It's now at the Grossinger Motors Arena, and that will be this Saturday on the 19th, 9:00 AM to 12:00. Next slide. Once upon a holiday, the Holiday Tree Lighting, and this is truly the last First Friday event. I think I said last, last meeting that that was our last First Friday. But in fact, this is for the Holiday Tree Lighting. And then additionally, the only other comment that I had this time was just all the Veterans Day events that we had. This community does an excellent job of being represented by veterans, but also the residents supporting veterans. So not this past Saturday, but Saturday before, you had the rededication of the World War II monument right here at downtown Bloomington at the McLean County Museum. And then on Saturday, had the Veterans Day event at the museum. The mayor spoke at that. It was represented very well by council members. And then on, I'm sorry, that was Friday. And then on Saturday evening at the BCPA, the US Army Jazz Band from Fort Meade outside of Washington, DC, gave a concert on Saturday night. So I guess just recognizing the veterans and thank you to the community for all that we do for the veterans. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and just kind of following up on, on that, he as Tim said, I was, you know, there on, on Friday, so which was a great event, and also on the Saturday before. But this coming Thursday, the 17th, right? Yep, 17th, there is a another event, the Fallen Hero Tree of Honor Tree Lighting Ceremony at the, at the airport, 5 o'clock. So if anybody is available to it, then I think that'd be great. And also, I want to say, I don't remember you saying this, Tim, but the, you know, on the, at the event on Friday, Connect Transit announced that they were going to offer lifetime passes to veterans in the community, so which I thought was a very nice gesture, and it was well received by the audience then. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to council to see if there's any comments. Okay, no? All right, then I guess we're going to move on to a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Boland. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Becker.